Call this meeting to order.
I'll get this back to you.
Thank you. So the first thing we need to do is elect a chair for this year. So I will ask for nominations.
Alvin, any thoughts?
Maybe the game.
I'm going to repeat my nomination of last year. You've done a fine job. You've got a good voice for the board. Do your homework and speak well.
Thank you.
Say if you're okay with accepting a nomination, I would nominate you.
Second?
Second.
Great. Nomination to second. All those in there?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
That was easy.
Yep. All right, why don't we move on to department heads? Sam, you want to kick us out?
Sure. Unpaid receivable as of this afternoon. Nothing out of the ordinary. There's current use change tax on the second page that we do that in February that he's paying off in court. So that's not been released because he hasn't paid it off before.
Which, how do we know which one that is?
The very last one. Twenty-five U.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It looks pretty good, Sam.
Bill is going to go out Thursday for leaving, notices for leaving.
Yeah.
Going to go out on Thursday and that's going to initiate the actual process.
And that's no more than expected or?
There's two or three people on here. Bueller Fellowship isn't usually on here. Because of, but they have not contacted us. Nobody, Liberty Utilities usually pays up, but on the first half of twenty-four, but their payment never arrived, so. What else?
Not much.
Well, yeah, they paid the principal, that's just the interest they had to pay. So. Nobody else really out of the ordinary.
And these, which are the ones that are going to go out for lease, the one at the very top?
Twenty-two, P-one, P-two.
Okay, thank you.
Money for the voting machine is approved at Tom Reed's, you guys see that bill come through probably at April meeting and Tom Reed and that will also be coming through for your approval to get those.
The machines are available this year. So when you say that, you'll get that done. Okay. Questions for Sam? Okay. Chief Clodine?
Evening.
Good evening.
Just so you know, chief, when you pull in behind me in the parking lot like that, I totally almost T-boned your car on the way out because it's black and I didn't see it and I thought at the last second, oh!
That would be embarrassing.
That would be very embarrassing, just so you know.
I'm going to stand because I don't fit in those chairs.
Okay, that's fine.
All right. Okay. So from February eighteenth to March sixteenth, we had ten incident reports. Calvin just said, you know, that's full reports of typed up narratives, everything. That's not just incidents that we get, so it's full blown reports. We had three arrests, five accidents, forty-three citations, three hundred and ninety-five calls for service, and we had state police assistance on three calls.
Not bad, three calls?
The calls for service are down, we're actually higher than where this time last year.
Yep.
But this time of year, that can slow down, it's cold outside.
Yep.
And were the accidents okay, everything ended up well or?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Always good to know.
Yeah.
Great.
Questions for the chief?
Questions for us? Well, then I guess we're good.
We do not.
Oh, no, thank you, chief.
Thanks for that. Chief Gamache, good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I will sit down, so I fit in those chairs.
You don't have the other?
Well, Chief Clodine always has to sit like this because I'm already quiet.
Ken, hope you're feeling better.
Okay, we're going to start right from the top here. So we're right on par with last year, which was our biggest year yet, a little over one emergency call a day. We're at eighty-two. No word of the incidents since the last time we met was, I was, I'm working with the state police, they reached out for information, we had an accident on the highway on January thirty-first. Serious injuries to an elderly male, him being fatal, him dying about a month after, so working on getting that information. And a couple of weeks ago, they had on a one-on-six, was actually in Loudoun, but we were called to assist. It was a pretty violent accident, so that's greater than that. But all the rest were kind of routine medical calls, medical and fire calls. Fire prevention, two weeks ago, I met with the new director, well, the newer director of Shake of Mill, which was a really productive meeting for both of us, we exchanged contact information, cell phones, all that stuff. This plan is moving forward in late spring to basically exercise their water system.
Yes.
It was brought to my attention, I wasn't aware, because I'd never seen a document that, actually, Ken shared with me that we can use that water system in our big agreement we signed in two thousand seventeen and move with Tom, giving them some assistance on our project. We can use the water system for fire in that area, so it's going to make life a little easier. The system has been exercised really since the new pump was installed several years ago, has been exercised since two thousand seventeen, and I'm aware, so we have a drill coming in May. The director wants to kind of come with us and do it, so she's very interested and we're going to build off of that, so good enough to work with her and keep lines of communication open and it's a productive meeting.
Great.
Membership ceremony, I'm always searching for ways, low-cost ways to keep the volunteers motivated, so your support on something like that is really, really important. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
That was a very nice ceremony, though.
Thank you. And then under the last section, we had two major breakdowns from our newest engine in the last couple of months, that cost us a lot of money, but we're going to remain in front of it for that. One was the thing that gives you pressure for water, we call it the throttle on the pump site, another one of our onspots, which our snow chains weren't releasing, weren't going down, weren't working, so those are fixed, those are wear items, so nothing to be totally around about. We had our annual fire warning training last week, it affected a pretty active season this year. We're ready for fresh season, we put everything in service today. Our forestry is ready to go, because we decommissioned that and transferred that to a truck in the winter. Now it's all set to go, we're going to have brush fires. Permits are now required to stay officially statewide if you want to have the outside permit.
Somebody was saying the other night that they could burn because it was after dusk and I was like, I don't think that's-
With a permit, with a permit, you can burn after five.
With a permit, okay.
You can burn after five.
I don't think the darkness makes the fire-
Even with a permit, you can't burn during the day.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, so. And permits, you know, I'm going to put it out there on our social media, but they can be done online in the company at home, it's like a free hall of convenience for you to do it online, but the community association will manually write one if we're there, and that's no problem.
Are our permit, you're issuing permits now, are this one that started? Did you say, I haven't checked the newsletter stuff yet, have you sent that to me?
I have not, I sent the announcement, we can't take breakfast, but I can, I can put the, I probably should put another one as part of the permits, yes, I'll do that.
Okay, thank you. That's fine.
Yep. Self-storage on Hall Road, the expansion is complete, the allowances involved are installed, so now there's on the left side, ERV storage is five buildings and on the right side is additional five, so they're up and running. It hasn't been a straight road to get where I want to with them, but we'll find the contact information keys, all that stuff, so things are good down there.
So this is the place that's been having the issue with the?
Yeah, yeah, they've been better as of the last three, four months, so.
That is good.
Put a little pressure on. We've been this paid and then the services for the pocket firefighter who passed away last week, it offered to cover the association, I offered the covers of the town chief. They never end up using our covered services, but several of our members were this paid and the service left. We picked out a road hydrant down by New Road, this is going to be installed sometime, probably late spring, early summer, it's a little bit too wet down there right now, but at the beginning of last year, I asked you for an extra five thousand to basically pay for that project and you put it on the back burner for obvious reasons, you had other competing interests for money. I was able to find end of year budget money to pay for that on my budget, so.
Even with all the budget cuts?
Even with the budget cuts, last year, yes.
Great.
Yeah, so.
Thank you.
Yeah. A new reporting platform, National Reporting Platform, is rolling out in the fall of two thousand twenty-five, so I'm working with the C E O on that project. Canterbury Elementary did all their security upgrades, basically, they came to me with an outpatient three days ago, because we had some input in that, the final spent install. I'm meeting with them next week to basically, you know, if there was an emergency there, a mass emergency, that we have access to wherever we want to in the school, so I'm meeting with their director next week and the principal to carry everything for the fire department.
Great.
Pancake Breakfast, again, is our only fundraiser of the year for the Firefighter Association, is the last Saturday in, last Saturday in April. The notice is going out in the newsletter, it'll be most posted in stores, so. It was a good event the last couple of years, this third year. Lieutenant Evan Hotman is the one who basically drives this bus with many of the dispaid members, so hopefully you can make it, pencil that in the calendar. And tomorrow morning, we are hosting the chiefs' monthly roundtable, basically chiefs of the whole contact area, fire marshal, home and security director, coffee, you know, muffins, eggs, all that stuff, so we're hosting that tomorrow.
Great.
Yep, that's it.
Two things.
Yeah.
One, when you put up your sign for the pancake breakfast this year, would you make sure whoever puts it up lashes it down so it doesn't go blowing up Hagganboro Road like it did last year?
Well, scrolling the newsletter, so I can go on our social media site and I will send you an email about it.
Yes, please, and ask her, what's the story with the Smokey the Bear son?
Yeah, well, that's on our list.
I know. Thank you.
We plan to take it down this winter and kind of work on it, but yeah. So we have the replacement board?
Right.
We're just going to go with it. Yeah.
I'll go up there and ask her.
Come on up, come on up, I'll put you to work.
Thank you. And your next training is next Monday?
Tonight and next Monday, yes.
Next Monday.
Every Monday.
So if I call up, I can talk to you about maybe coming to the next one?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
All right.
Anyone else?
Anything else?
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Oh, good, good. Mrs. Pink?
Thank you.
Good evening.
Thank you. Welcome to CAF. Congratulations and welcome. I will, as it's initiation for all new select board members, I do have a little information video, movie, rather, video on YouTube, so I'll send you the link on that. It just explains authority governance in the state and legislature and how it works with the library independent of the town, but yet I appear as a courtesy and just a community collaborator to the select board. You'll find that most of what I'm going to report is about the outside of the building, so it can always sound a little strange because I'm just talking about the outside of the building, but that's really the only thing that the town will govern on that. So I like to preface it that way because it sounds like all my care about our gutters, which you know that is not, you know that's strange. So I'll send you that, just a little crash course in how it all works. Great job on Friday. When last we spoke, attention was needed, I was nearly looking at the concrete pad in terms of the trip hazard.
I remember you mentioned.
Yeah, and I think at this point, it's become quite a trip hazard, but I think we're at the point where we could just use a little warning tape or a little warning paint, so I was just going to call John and see if that was something to do that, I'm not entirely sure if that's going to really help. I might just put a cone on it, but it's starting to run. And we've got some cracking, so the concrete, and it's in the-
Yes, it is.
So I'm not sure that is the greatest, but what can you do? I mean, we might need to pull it out and do a full paved path, probably.
Is that a separate stone here or is that all one piece of concrete with the little?
It's concrete poured, so it's in sections. I don't know why it's ever concrete and not a charred path, I'm not, not sure.
Because to be continued.
To be continued, it is twenty-one years old this year. Sergeant Johnson, it's Ken, there's Ken. Sergeant Johnson from New Hampshire Corrections contacted me, and I don't know if he contacted Ken. Maybe? Ken, I don't know.
Ken, you're beautiful. There you go.
Oh, yeah, I haven't heard anything from them.
Okay, so he called me and I felt like I was his only point of contact, so I said I would gladly take up the lead on that. Sergeant Johnson is from the New Hampshire Department of Corrections and he's usually the one who orchestrates the prisoners to come out and do a sort of work. So he has asked me to contact you, Ken, which I just haven't had a chance to do, about possible maintenance things. As much as I don't want to paint the outside, I think we're okay without painting the outside, but my trim needs a little attention.
The doors.
The doors need attention. I need probably a power washing, wouldn't hurt. So I wonder if Ken, you could just circulate that around to the other departments and see if there's anything, and then I can work with Sergeant Johnson to orchestrate that, get some dates in there.
Sure.
Okay.
Sure, thank you.
You're welcome, I'm happy to do that. And the back gutter, thank you. Peter Gladys, always the best, came, took it off, what happened was my gutter filled with ice, which would lead me to believe that I had a short in my heat tape. I would all, I mean, it had a heat line in it, so I would only imagine it didn't work and/or it was just too much ice at the time, and the whole gutter fell off the back. So thank you, Ken. Ken called Peter Gladys and comes right up quickly and efficiently to remove it, and I think you and I will discuss Ken later, replacement on that?
Yes.
Okay. And it didn't ding your new thing, did it?
It didn't ding my anything, it just kept crashing down and the cones are still there just because it's a little wet.
It did shut the power off to your solar panels, though.
Oh, did the disconnect.
That's why the solar panels weren't working.
Can you see my mouth gaping?
It's a gate-worthy conversation.
That's why.
Yes, so Jim Snyder came up and found the problem and took care of it.
Yeah, and I was a little cranky because it just came in, it was busy, and he said, why did you turn the power off? And I'm like, I was busy replacing the furnace filter, I don't know. So, okay.
Makes sense, though.
Answer a great number of things.
Yes. Put that on the list of things to check where you're disconnected.
Power disconnect.
Because you have-
Duty is not assigned. Okay, so anyway, thank you. And that is all I have for this evening, I'm about to meet with my trustees. Very excited and thankful to Tom and Joe Franco and the Community Power Gang. That was beautiful, I had a whole spiel ready to go, but just didn't feel like I needed it. And I'm meeting tonight with a representative from Ultra Geothermal, who is going to explain different heating options to my trustees, just because we need to have a little bit better understanding of what's available. I haven't signed anything certainly with Geothermal, but I do have two grants currently pending right now that I'm hopeful for, but I'm always hopeful for a grant, but this would be for a heating system.
But you haven't decided on Geothermal, you're still-
We haven't.
Still one of several?
It's one of several, and it's one of several companies that I've talked to, just this particular salesman was the most comprehensive, gave me the most comprehensive audit, gave me the most information.
So how many have I talked to?
Ultra Geothermal, and they are in town. And Parker's going to come up because my trustees just wanted a little bit better explanation on what Geothermal was versus heat pumps, versus air cooling, versus ground cooling. So we're going to hear from him tonight at our trustee's meeting. Oh, the other thing was, to answer the question about the trustees of the trust fund, Ken and I talked about it, and I need to find the specifics of that particular trust to figure out the mechanism by which to get those dividends. Beth had gone to the trustee of trust fund meeting and Ken and I got together on that, so I am working on that. I am going to ask the trustees tonight, as it is their decision, what to do with that most funds.
But didn't we, we signed it so you could get them?
You may have, I don't know.
I think we did.
Okay.
Sure.
Okay, so I just have to put it before the trust, before the-
Oh, you need to find out what you can actually use those for, they're constructed in any way?
Well, and I can't handle any money.
Okay.
Right? So the board of trustees, we have to-
Yeah.
Any questions?
No.
Thank you. Good to, good that you're getting your bucks, the money from the trustees.
Be helpful.
Yeah.
Very helpful. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Roger.
Thanks, Ken.
Hey, Ken, I'm thinking, I see Mr. Booth has joined us.
Yes.
Mr. Booth, can you hear me okay?
Sorry, who are you asking for?
You.
Ah, me, yes, hi, now I can hear you. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. So I figure since you're this early, we're going to, we'll take you out of order so that you don't have to sit here for forty-five minutes and sort of put your ears on. So can you hear Ken Folsom, who's also online with you?
Yes, I was able to hear Ken.
Very good.
Hi, David.
Hi.
Ken, can you kind of lay out everything since we have a-
My wife is here with me, next to me, she's in, anyway.
Oh, there he is.
You can see her a little bit.
We can see her. Okay, very good. Ken, can you sort of lay out the, what we're up to and?
Sure, sure, so Mr. Booth owns the property behind the municipal building and when the town bought that property, the municipal building is on, there was a right of way. And I guess some paperwork was done and it looked like the right of way, from the town's perspective, the right of way was no longer there, but Mr. Booth pointed out and then reviewed a bunch of deeds and everything, it looks like the right of way was still a viable right of way. So Mr. Booth owns the little sliver of land between the municipal building and Lenny Canaski's property next door, and he was hoping to get some kind of access to his property that way. We put together a map and diagram that shows how much property is there and so I guess at this point, it's up to you guys to talk to Mr. Booth and figure out how you want to move forward with this.
So Mr. Booth, in looking, Calvin, could I have that, just the tactile? Yep. So in looking at the drawing, which I'm not sure, Ken, does Mr. Booth have this?
Yes.
Okay. So as you can see, we can't do fifty feet for the entire length of the property. It narrows down going toward your property.
Yeah, can you, so what was the reason why it can't? Can you just refresh me, it's been a couple of weeks since I saw that?
No worries.
Yes, so I sent you that diagram that shows that the property line between Lenny's property and the town property, that sliver of land that goes through where the Soulville Trail is, up by where the building is, there's propane tanks and then asphalt, the part of the driveway, and it's only, I think, thirty-four feet wide at that point, from, if you went from Lenny's, Lenny's property right to the propane tanks or to the hot top driveway. So it narrows down, up towards the road, there is space, but as you get further back off the Baptist Road, you can see where the propane tanks and then the underground propane tanks and then the hot top goes towards the east, over towards your property, and it's only about thirty-four feet from Lenny's property over to where the hot top and the propane tanks are.
Right, so could the propane tanks be moved? I mean, are those?
Well, I'm sure they could, but I'm guessing, you know, quite a considerable cost and I don't know where they'd have to put them, you know, everything's underground there, so all the lines run underground to the building and all that, so.
I think, yeah.
Quite a, quite a task.
Right, yeah. Yeah, okay, right, so and I don't, I don't know if, I don't know how much background others on this call know about it, but this is, this is something that only came to my attention about two or three years ago when I was researching a completely unrelated boundary issue on a different part of my property and I superimposed multiple surveys on top of each other and the tax map, and that's when I noticed the issue.
Okay.
But, so that's just background.
Yeah.
But anyway, my goal is to, is to get access to that back and the idea that Ken is alluding to was, one idea I had was given that I do own that lane there that's between Mordarski and the town's property, you know, I was thinking, maybe I could exchange, do a boundary adjustment that would, that would ensure that that lane is a full fifty feet wide all the way back to mine and in exchange, I would give the town like an equal amount of land in the back, you know, in exchange. So Ken's pointing out that there would be an issue, even doing that in terms of running into those propane tanks. The, the, what did you say, the blacktop? The blacktop?
Yeah, yeah, on that diagram, you'll see where the blacktop from the driveways is only thirty-four feet from, I think it's thirty-four feet from Lenny's over to the blacktop, so there's a fifty feet there either.
And the other issue that I see is there's a utility pole and that's the narrow west part at twenty-eight feet.
Ah, utility pole, that sounds like a-
And that's the utility pole that brings the power into the building, so it's right ahead from the road to that pole and then everything's underground from there into the building. So that's another obstacle.
Yeah, okay. Well, I mean, I'm just trying to brainstorm here, you know, what might be the simplest solution or something, so I'm open to other ideas as well. It is important to me to have access to the back, I don't have any current plans to, you know, for development back there, but I do, it is important to me to leave that option open.
Understood, yeah.
What's the significance of fifty feet? Was it established? A glance at these deeds, is there an established fifty feet in any of those deeds in a reference in the previous right of way?
There was, it went through that property where the municipal building is now.
Okay. I was just curious as to, a lot of driveways, you know, if they reference a skater road or a logging road, Woods Road, are generally twenty, twenty-five feet wide, so I just didn't see the fifty foot reference.
Well, that's a lot of material to-
Well, that's a big road, I mean, that's fifty feet's a big, big road.
Yes, it is.
Well, and that's, and that was my question too, is it fifty feet, does it need to be a fifty foot right of way to put a road into the back? Or does it only need to be big enough to access if you wanted to put one house back there or maybe a shared driveway for two houses? Why fifty feet? And I was reading through the information we got several meetings ago that back in two thousand twenty-three, there was a lot of discussion about whether that fifty feet was actually correct. So I don't know how that ever gets decided.
Yeah, so in terms of the question about why fifty feet, my understanding is that fifty feet is the requirement for the width of, that's, I don't know if it's, I think it's a state requirement or something like that for the width of a driveway, if it is going to, if a driveway would be put in to go back there to become a road eventually to multiple houses, for example. to go back there to become a road eventually to multiple, uh, houses, for example. Um, and in terms of the question of how wide that lane is, that is a discrepancy between some of the deeds. Um, the deed that I have says that it is fifty feet. Uh, but the survey that was done for the town indicates that it starts at fifty feet at Baptist Road, but then by the time you get back there farther, it's narrower. So that is a discrepancy between the deeds.
Okay.
Yeah. Is fifty feet a frontage restriction in terms of being able to put a road in? Cause I mean, I live on a class six road and my road is only twenty feet wide, for instance. So is there a way to compromise with fifty feet of frontage and have it progress to that thirty feet or thirty-five feet and still have the access you want without having to move utilities, propane, walls, et cetera?
My, my understanding is that that is not allowed, that if, if it were ever to become a road, it would have to have fifty feet.
Okay. And actually, um, David, you can't see him, but the road agent is under the screen here in the room, and he's nodding his head that you are correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Even though they can't see you, John.
Right. Right. He can hear you. Yeah. So really, we narrowed, the narrow west is twenty-eight feet. Um, right?
So do we still have to deal with that discrepancy? It's never been cleared up?
The deed discrepancy?
Yeah.
Maybe?
Well, I mean, I, I can tell you that, that from the town's perspective, what I was told was that the town believed, or that, no. The surveyor that the town used was convinced that his survey was correct.
That's, uh.
I understand.
His interpretation of the deed was correct.
Yeah, okay.
So that, that is, yeah, but it's never been adjudicated, let me put it that way.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Um, another, I, I don't know if this is another, if this is an option at all or not, but another possibility that came to my mind, and this, this would have, well, I would, it would also be fine with me if Lenny Mordarsky would want to do the same kind of swap of I could give him additional land in the back in exchange for additional that part on, on his side of it. But of course, that, you know, that's not the town's business to decide.
Right.
But I'm just mentioning it because, you know, from my perspective, that would be another solution.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah. Ken, any thoughts on that?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think at this point, you know, it might probably be in the town's best interest to contact Lenny and, and see if we can, you know, all get together and sit down at the table and, and try and figure something out that, that makes everybody happy, I guess would be the best way to do it. Um, I think, I think everybody's end goal is to, to not end up in court over this.
Right.
Um, and, and, you know, maybe we could, could all sit down and, and look at the maps and look at the deeds and try and figure out what's a, what's a good compromise on all this.
Yeah. Mr. Booth, what do you think?
Yeah, I'm, I'm totally open to, yeah.
So why don't we, why don't we investigate that? Um, and, and see what happens? I mean, all we can do is ask.
Yeah.
And, uh, you know, as long as you're okay with us, um, approaching via butter, um.
Yeah, that's fine with me. Yep. Totally fine with me.
Just want to make sure and, um, and then we'll, we'll see what he says and go from there.
Yeah, okay.
All right.
Right.
Mr. Booth, anything else from you?
No, I don't think so.
Okay.
You know, I, I also just want to, you know, say thank you, uh, for, you know, taking the time to discuss this.
Glad to.
And for all the work you do. Um, and if anybody has any other ideas, creative ideas, you know, I'm open to other ideas as well, so.
Yeah.
But this sounds like a good thing to ask, so, yeah.
Um, I, I think that's a good idea worth pursuing, so we'll, we'll do that.
Um. Okay.
Yeah. Ken, um, what do we think? Um, you're, I know you're out for the, probably what, next week or so, right?
Yeah. So I'll, I'll, uh, I'll get ahold of Lenny and, and see if we can have a command. I'll explain everything to him, uh, when I get back to work and, and it'll be a couple of weeks. And then, then, uh, I'll probably talk to Dave and let you know that I made contact with him and, and, uh, see if there's any room for, for negotiations over this.
Sounds good.
All right.
Yeah.
So we're going to look at talking again in, like, the end of April, or is this going to go into May?
Yeah, I would, I would say at least the, a month out, the, the second meeting in April would be something we could shoot for anyway.
So that's the twenty-first.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That sounds like a plan. All right.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you, Mr. Booth. Have a good night.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
All right. Um, John, you want to join us? You know, the other departments heads have come and gone, so.
Um, while, while John is getting organized, is it, is it appropriate for the town to approach Lenny as opposed to, um, Mr. Booth, or is the town just going to act?
I think if we explain the situation and then see if he's open to any negotiations, at least, you know, we could, we could do that. And then, um, if there's any negotiations between him and Mr. Booth, and they would have to do it on their own. The town would be involved in that.
Would the town be asking, acting more in this instance, like we were for Lyford Pond, to get the parties together in the same room?
Yeah.
Uh, not actually?
Probably pretty good on your energy.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
So that's sixteen feet is what he wants.
Correct. Uh, the narrowest.
Yeah, sixteen feet to the corner.
Yeah.
Well, I would also hazard to just.
It'd be more than that.
Say while I'm thinking of it, that I'm not sure of, from the town's point, an equal swap of land for land is, is what we're looking for, but I don't know how to, just how to discuss that because of the, the value of being able to get to that property is more than a strip of.
And that, that may be part of negotiations.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And I think he'd be looking at, um, let's see, twenty-eight, thirty, forty, it's a twenty-two feet.
Mm-hmm.
I think it narrows to twenty-eight feet, right?
Okay, yeah, yeah. It's thirty-four in the paper.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's just a, looking for room for salt chip.
Yeah. Well, that's what, I think what Ken's thinking too, is if we get a strip in the back.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So I, I think we're all sort of thinking the same thing.
All right. So pencil that in, him in for somewhere in April, like this, like the twenty-first. Okay.
Sounds good. John.
Thank you, John.
We have my favorite international back in the shed. If you look at the budget, you'll see that we're now up to twenty grand so far this year on repairs. But at least that one's right.
Is that the one that had to go all the way back down to Manchester?
Uh, three times.
Oh, three times. Okay.
Um, the other international, T one, the older one, is, uh, waiting for the record, the one we get it stripped down, but that will not start. It's where the other one started. Um, most of the roads, three, five, three, six, you all mentioned that, so that mud is here. We've added stone to some of the roads.
Yeah.
This rain has really helped. It's driving it right out with good old frost. Um, had to spend time thawing culverts. Haven't had to do that for some years.
I've just went.
So thank you for letting us buy the, uh, the pressure washer last year.
Yeah. Hope that helped a lot, so.
It certainly did.
Cool.
And we had a nice windstorm. You had five, six roads closed at one time.
Crazy.
Few trees down.
Yeah.
Um, I received a call from Innerville Road. They would like a pine tree taken down. Uh, it's actually in the Sistern area.
Okay.
Piece.
Yeah.
Um, when he mentioned it was the town land, I said, oh, now, now I'll take a look at it. I was thinking, man.
So it's Sistern side?
Does.
On the same side?
On the same side, yeah. It's pretty close to Scotty's.
Yeah.
Line.
Yeah.
But, uh, this, I'll take it down and just leave it in the woods. The woodpeckers have got a lot of holes in it.
Yeah.
So that one I'll take down. Um, I received a call from Lamprey Road, the big bull pine by York's. She would let that down, and I said, I'm not touching that tree.
Is it as big as the one they took down across the street at Antle at Lamprey's?
It's bigger.
Cause that thing was huge. Oh, wow. Okay.
Yeah, the big one that leads.
Yeah, yeah.
She's concerned it's going to enter her house, but, um, been up there a lot of years, so good life in it.
Yeah.
At what point does it become the town's responsibility to do that? Take it down?
Is it the town's responsibility, or is it the landowners on that side of the roads?
Yeah.
Tree. I mean, I deal with it when they're on the ground. As been pretty much the board's choice that I don't cut trees.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. How?
That pretty much cleared my sheet. Do you have questions for me?
I do have two. Um, what does one do with, I tried to go up Cackleboro the other day and down by the sugar house there is a little dicey. Does, Ken, is anything?
It's getting soft and they're going to add some stone to that area.
Oh, that, that stone will go in there? Perfect.
Yeah.
Thank you. And, um, the tree, the limbs that are all down in the center around the one tree by the gazebo, is that on your?
It's, it's, it's on, uh, the one we have timed last.
If I got to it first, would that be okay by you and by the town? If I took, if I put the wood in the back of my car so you wouldn't have to?
Tom has got some, she's trying to say.
Remember? Would you like, oh, yes.
I talked about that.
I wouldn't want you to do that. We'll get, we'll get it.
I would burn it. I, that's not that. I'm trying to make it your job easier or anything. Selfishly want the wood.
Well, John, we want to get, is that okay by you?
Sure, please.
Okay. Yeah, no, the volunteer group, I, I wasn't able to help last year, but we want to get back to helping in the center and cleaning up. And I kind of had that on my list too, so I guess it's whoever gets there first.
There you go. Okay.
Otherwise, good.
And Bowden came back for spring break and.
Yeah.
Uh, helping out at the transfer station, so. So anytime he wants to spend hours there, I've had it.
Yeah, exactly.
And anybody else.
All right. Thanks, Jim.
Thank you, John.
Man, sorry for being late. Carter Hill was misbehaving.
No worries. You're a busy guy, so. All right.
I think both Charlie and Donna came to listen to Mr. Booth.
Oh, too late.
You're kidding.
No.
Oh, shoot.
Mr. Booth signed on very early and we took him out of order, so. Um, John, you're set?
I'm set.
Okay. So for both of you, where we left it is we're going to approach via butter. Um, because the, it'll be easier actually if we showed you the photo that's in the folder, Beth, if you could grab that. So the right of way narrows to twenty-eight feet at one of the utility poles. So, and it, um, it widens out a little bit to thirty-four feet. So, um.
Lock them down there.
Sure.
Yeah.
You got more?
Um, I don't know. Chris?
What?
Charlie Colby.
Oh, Charlie, sorry.
All right, so this one's feet, Baptist Road.
Mm-hmm.
All right, the house next to him, let's see.
Who understands that?
That's for listening, so I know the name.
The energy base.
Right. I don't know the name.
Right.
They're a, they're a. These white there are. Oh, yeah.
I don't know if you're aware, but the water line swings out around those propane tanks. It comes down that side.
Nope, we certainly weren't.
Thank you, John.
Stepway. Ken, did you hear that?
I did.
Okay.
So what, can you give us some more background on like what's happening with this part?
So at this point, we're going to approach the butter that's on the, I'm losing my directions, but I'm.
East?
I, I can't tell.
Lenny Mordarsky.
Pointing at, yeah.
Yeah, so that east would be the opposite side.
Okay. See if he would be available to also a swap of land. So it would increase to the fifty foot minimum that's needed and give him some more land in the back. But we don't know yet if he's even willing to discuss that, so it's just a thought.
And the, because the town is amenable to a swap of some sort?
Yes.
And what is he wanting to develop in there?
At this point, he says he has no plans to develop any, but he does want to leave himself open for a, a potential future project.
Well, could be accept the door denied, right?
That would be up to the plan.
Right.
So, but yes, that's correct.
Yeah.
And Donna, my memory is twenty, maybe seventeen or eighteen, I believe, he approached the planning board. Um, and wanted to do, would be your residence, I think you own a strip there to access his property.
Those driver down, except that the press where it comes down now.
Oh, that's right. Because there was a problem with the state and the, the light of sight.
My side.
Yeah. So they would not grant him access there.
Wait, I'm saying, wouldn't grant him access across from the transfer station?
I'm sorry.
Hey, where's the location that they wouldn't grant those?
Just, it would be to the west of the public safety center. What's the, the people that live on the farm right next door, public safety center, just downhill from that.
Yep, yep. Right. So it's six Baptist Road, which is the fourth apartment.
Okay.
Yeah.
We're going to take your word for the house number.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
And what, just out of curiosity, what, what is the swap?
So at this point, there is no swap. The proposed swap would be the swap there plus enough land to make it a fifty foot wide, which is required for the right of way.
Mm-hmm.
But once again, that's a private landowner, so that would be up to him if he wanted to entertain that or not.
Oh, I see. But the town is not swapping anything for it?
Not, we're not doing anything.
Oh, I misunderstood. Okay. I understand. So the town can't do anything, but this owner here to the east.
Right. He would have to.
It's up to them what they would like to do.
Well, yeah, and at that point, it would essentially become a three-way swap. The town would get property in the back of the municipal center in exchange for our pieces that narrow pie-shaped is town property. So, but he would have to also.
This is town property?
Bring it up here so I can see what you're talking about.
Sure.
I'm old and my eyes aren't that great, so. All right. So this is town property.
Right.
This narrow strip. So the problem is utility pole here narrows to twenty-eight feet. And then there are underground propane tanks here at thirty, thirty-four feet. So the idea is.
And we just heard the water line.
Correct, and the water line, wherever that is now. So the idea is we create fifty feet all the way back by going onto Lenny's property. In exchange, Lenny would get a strip here, we would get a strip somewhere back here in exchange for.
I see. But the way that this map looks, it looks like this is contiguous with his property. Not, doesn't belong to the town, but you're telling me that this does.
It does, yeah.
Yeah, but this part would need to be. But this, but that's all, I mean, none of that has been determined or, you know, we're, we're going to figure it out and try and meet.
This red line over is town property.
Neighbor over.
So this.
This line over.
Ken will approach Lenny and justify, uh, kind of like we did with Lyford Pond, try to get everybody in the same room at the same time to not go to the water.
But we don't, when we get down to this utility.
But conversations are just.
Don't have an underground propane tank, so. So obviously moving utility pole and underground tanks and now a water line is going to be very costly.
Okay. Wasn't there a, a, a right of way that?
That's the issue. The right of way, as I understand it, goes somewhere like here.
Oh, okay.
That's obviously.
Yeah, the, the, Scott, the.
Go ahead, Ken.
The, uh, right of way went down where, close where the existing driveway is now to the safety complex.[1769.89] And if you look at the maps, it would run almost right through the building itself. That was the old right of way.
Right.
Yeah.
But the town owns the land, so you'd have to have two parties other than the booths who, you know, wanted to make some sort of swap. One is the neighbors to the east and the other is the town.
You, you are correct.
Okay.
That's absolutely correct. Yep.
Okay.
Yeah.
And do you guys have a delivery to the value attitude toward the project that's?
So at this point, there is no project.
I understand.
So, so nothing, this would.
So it then just comes later because Percy is.
Right, and, and it actually is not a select board function, it's a planning board function.
I see.
So it appears for that first, it'd have to be publicly noticed, so, so. But Ken, my, my, at least from what Mr. Booth has told us, there is no impending project, right?
That's correct. He doesn't have any intention at this point. Uh, he's just trying to get, um, access to that back property. And he was hoping to get fifty feet because that would, that would be what would be required to put a road in there.
Makes sense?
Yeah, no, I think.
Cool, okay.
Right.
Other questions? Okay. Thank you, guys. Sorry, we saw you.
That's okay, that's okay.
Sure, your curve ball.
That's all right.
But feel free to reach out to us if, if you, if you have any further questions or concerns.
Yeah.
So certainly watch for a, your first, um, notice of a project would be through the planning board.
Right.
So just keep an eye on, on their public noticing.
And you're an actual a butter to that, right?
So you would definitely get noticed.
Are you a butter?
Well, no, I mean, if nothing's happening to six Baptist Road, then we're not gonna butter.
Oh, okay.
Oh, yeah, that makes sense.
Okay.
Yeah.
But crazy are right in Paxton, crazy are.
Seven and a half ago?
Yeah.
Um, twelve years?
Okay, yeah, so, so did you get a notice of a project like in twenty, I don't know, maybe seventeen or eighteen, somewhere in there?
No, you mean for the, for the, for the road access? Now, my memory researching this when I came up with Mr. Booth a while ago. So he, he said that, well, doesn't matter what he said, but I, I asked the Department of Transportation because that's public record. He never completed that application. I guess they determined that it was, you know, not enough visibility.
That's all.
Some sort of law had actually changed about the state highway or something like that. Um, but no, I was never alerted to it.
Interesting, so I would say definitely keep an eye and ear open.
Yeah.
For public notices.
Right, and the planning board.
Needs here.
Needs here, and it would make the determination whether it's in the interests of the planning board to make a swap of that land which belongs to the.
No, no, I'm, I'm sorry, and if I gave that impression, that's incorrect. We decide if that's in the town's best interest on land swap. Any future project that Mr. Booth might propose would go before the planning board.
Right.
Unless it's, Ken, feel free to hop in here. If he were to put a single house in there, that would not go before the planning board, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah.
That's correct.
But if there was a, and I'm sure your concern is a development, that would certainly go before the planning board.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Take care, see you.
All right, have a good one.
Thank you, me too.
Donna, I'll get in touch with you about the tree.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Ken, anything else on that?
No, I think that's it. Uh, I'll give it a whirl, Lenny, and we'll see what we can do.
Sounds good. Um, I'm gonna just go back to signing and we'll make our way down through that part, okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Wow. Maybe we may be setting a record here for stuff to sign. All right. So this looks like.
Good pen, tonight.
Yeah, accounts payable manifest in the amount of thirty-nine thousand, eight hundred seventy dollars and eighty-nine cents.
So moved.
All second, all those in favor?
Aye. What was the number, please, Ken?
Thirty-nine, eight, seven, zero, and eighty-nine cents.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome. There's that. Um, Calvin, if you want to look at like detail, um, typically, when's the best time to look at, at stuff like that? Monday day?
Yeah, yeah, anytime.
And see, you were Mary?
Yeah, Monday afternoon is when we'll, like that, um, we were pretty swamped today, so we have that ready until like four o'clock, but.
Yeah, but if you wanted to like look in detail before designing?
Yeah. Yeah.
So. All right, next is a check for Al Adelstein in the amount of one hundred forty dollars. It looks like gas and mileage, Cal.
It's a mileage reimbursement that he gets. Um, and he doesn't sign that check because it's a check.
I understand, okay, so I'm gonna sign that.
He was signing.
Yeah.
Um, and Mary is getting in contact with T Bank to get you's ability to sign. But the way they do it means that we'd have to have everybody sign it, so we'd have to have all three of you and Greg Heath and Al.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Probably next week.
All right, it sounds like a plan.
So I can't sign this one?
We don't have to anyway.
But I just, in, in the interest of transparency, I just want you to have the opportunity to look at it.
To going back through what's in T Bank to make deposits.
And what I'm doing right now is sending a picture of the manifest to Al. Um, because he's got, he comes in on Tuesdays to sign all the checks, but he needs proof that the select board actually approved him signing all those checks. So that's what I do with this.
All right, uh, yeah, we'll pass that over to Cal. All right, so next, it looks like a payroll manifest in the amount of sixty thousand, seven hundred eleven dollars and thirty-six cents.
So moved.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
And I skip the welfare manifest for now, unless you wanna, if you don't.
No, because we're gonna talk about that. We already decided which one is that.
I, I've got it in my hand.
Oh, good, okay, so you just gotta hold on to it, cool. All right. So next is, let's see, accounts payable, mileage, payroll, welfare, we're gonna skip for now. Twenty twenty-five pay rates. So are these just for review and signature?
Yes, so those are all, all the budgets that were calculated and approved on town meeting.
Yeah.
Um, those are the pay rates for each individual person that those budgets were calculated for. So we just have you sign that.
Yeah, so we don't need a motion, I don't believe.
And they already approved it.
Right, yeah, the town.
Yes.
Yeah, we're just making it painfully clear.
Right.
What each person is getting.
Exactly, right.
Is, could, is this, is this person supposed to still be here?
No, it's in that reason.
Um, he's still there because he, um, gets retro pay for the time that he did work.
Oh, okay.
So we wanted to include the, what he was supposed to get.
Okay.
Um, there's, I already did a retro pay earlier today, but, um, just to also make it painfully clear. That's what he got for children.
Okay. All right, Cal, next I see something from Citizens Bank. Sand Lake Trust Office of the Selectment, it looks like they need an authorized signer?
Yes, we're adding you as an authorized signer, so you need to sign in in two places.
All right.
And, uh, contact information update is the first page.
Because Citizens is the trustee of that trust, right, but they need, uh, this is appointing Scott the, uh.
Yes.
Is the.
So that way when, we have to send a letter to them saying, please give us the distribution of the interest.
Right.
And Scott signs it.
Okay. More about trust now than I, I ever thought I would know in this life.
All right, uh, and so who signs down here?
That, I think Ken needs to sign.
Okay, all right.
So I'm gonna, that's why I.
Okay, do either of you want to say this?
Yeah.
Okay?
Oh, yeah, that's the, your annual due diligence, is trustee of the trust? Yeah, good.
They're already put that character in the screen now.
Yeah. All right, pass that. Cal, Ken, do you want to say anything about the junkyard license renewal?
Uh, no. Uh, it's just, uh, we really don't have any, um, we don't have an inspection. The state, uh, inspects the junkyards. Basically, all we're doing is saying to the owner that they're certifying, that they're abiding by the state rules. They sign it, then you sign it after that.
Okay, so no motion, just signatures, right?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Junkyard out there. You need it?
No, I always bring a spare. I just gotta find it.
I got it, I want it.
How we put two, just in case.
We usually borrow from Scott.
Yeah.
Who's the one gonna count halfway?
I know, I could've gone, just so nobody questions it. Yeah, that looks better. All right, I'll give you that. All right, we have some appointment slips. Kathleen Doherty, assistant moderator for two years. Um.
Do you get to weigh in on this?
I don't know. Ken, are we okay with this? It's an unpaid position, so.
We've only got her for two more years. Or we said she's not interested in.
No, because she was very clear on that.
Well, that's too bad.
Well, I'm sorry, we're also losing our time.
Well, yeah, really.
Who I think does an amazing job. Yep, we'll work on that. All right, next one is appointing Steve Rocha to the Solid Waste Committee for a two-year period? Excuse me, for a three-year period?
Reappoint, right, these are.
Reappoint, correct.
When did you start that? Two years ago?
We're gonna find out. No, I've been along with them. It's been quite a long time.
Yeah. They've got minutes, uh, look back at the three years.
Actually, Cal's researching, uh, some information from me relating to that.
Oh, good, yeah. Got a couple of questions to answer.
Yeah.
Wait to see what's your question for.
All right, uh, citizens and Sam, thank you for that. And you go, Cal. All right, new vehicle appointment slips are done, all right, veterans.
Just two? Just two appointments left?
That's correct, just two appointments left, yeah. All right, so this is a, uh, Cal, this is the veteran's exemption, correct?
Yes, it is.
And that's been all vetted?
Yes, the, um, whole thing is from Mandy, so.
Very good.
So, does that beat all of our?
Yes, I believe it needs all of ours, right?
Uh, there's.
There's enough, there's multiple lines.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure all of those are requiring, okay? I think she would've written a name on it.
Yeah. I think there was one other.
We should've put a laptop like there, so Ken's face could be like next to you, where he usually is. That feels weird sitting in my seat, I should be.
Right.
Two feet that way.
It is funny how we all get used to our, our normal places, if you will. All right, I think that's.
We have town meeting, Ken, Ken came up and, hey, can I have my seat?
Yeah.
Geez, okay.
Yeah.
But, excuse me.
And it's, uh.
I'm, I'm writing Scott Doherty is my name, really, come on. I didn't use it. Let me see what you do. Remember, you're not stuck.
Oh, yeah.
Just look at invalidate the whole thing.
Thank you. All right, next is a current use application from Louis O'Depp of One Forty New Road. He's enrolling nine point two acres into current use.
New road?
New road.
Okay.
Yeah, and it's been approved by me.
Yeah. It'll offset a little bit of the stuff that came out of current use. This one place, right, yes?
Yes, yeah, look, that's just the one place. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, next is a, uh, abatement for timber tax. And I'll let you each read through it. It is for Rich, uh, and Lisa Mercu, ninety-two Baptist Hill Road, Vermont two-two-nine, lot fourteen. And, um, I know there's been some back and forth with Mandy over the correct amount. Um, so it, it seems like they have arrived at an amount that is acceptable to Mandy and acceptable to Rich and Lisa. So the documentation is all here, if you want to look.
I seen both those people have gone, oh, there's a couple of blue things, I'm assuming you have to sign in a couple of places.
Thank you for catching me.
The town budget outline is for little blue cities.
Yeah.
I can tell you which line there, pardon.
All right, I think that's here. I think that's actually, other than what you've got, the last thing that we need to sign for now. Actually, I'll give you that.
Could I have the booth folder back as well?
Yes. Got it, sorry. You need to put it in.
No, no, that's fine.
What's the normal timber tax, like ten percent?
It's supposed to be ten percent, that's right.
And that's off the gross income and net income?
Ken, do you remember?
Yeah, that's off the gross.
Okay.
Yeah. And Mandy really deserved.
I'm not guessing, expert. I'm not familiar with timber taxes.
You neither.
For the stomach drunks?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is it, is it possible to get a copy of this letter just so I can understand what his concerns were and how we figured it out?
Of course.
Okay. I see, explains, explains it well. Can I just get that from Mandy?
Sure. See if I have my list.
Okay.
Here you go.
Anything we can take after this?
Yeah. Alright, one minute, two minutes next.
Uh, that'll be in the booth folder.
Thank you, yep, so it is. Thank you, I'll give that back to you. Alright, so moving on, let's start with the executive session of, and actually Calvin, you won't be able, since you weren't here.
Right.
Um, so Beth, for you and I...
I read them, I'm just, yeah, fair fun.
Okay, so I'll leave the minutes?
Oh, this is the executive session, yes.
Yes, that's correct, this is the executive session of February the eighteenth.
Yes, I, uh, seconded.
Okay, all those in favor? Aye. abstain? That would be you. And did you, you didn't give Calvin a copy?
I did.
Okay, so typically, the executive session minutes will have your name on them, and you turn those back in when we approve them, so they remain private, okay? So, these, however, will become public and are public.
So we can keep ours.
That is correct, yeah, exactly right. Alright, so turning our attention to the draft minutes from March third, twenty twenty-five.
I didn't see anything in those either.
Me neither, you look, right?
Alright.
Alright, so I'll make a motion real proof?
And seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, abstain? Alright, so we have that. I'm gonna get me the copy and turn that back in to you.
Okay. This is also one of our shorter pages of minutes.
It is, yeah.
That's 'cause you had... We were racing to get at here to the fire department.
So why don't we, um...
So, if you wanna talk about the properties?
Okay, I'm sorry, the...
Oh, sorry, um, the design of the representatives for boys and ladies?
Yes.
Or did you wanna switch to...
Actually, what I thought we would do is the offer to purchase town-owned property.
Okay.
And then we could talk about, um, yeah.
Um, you have, the offer is in, in there.
New pages?
Um, and the offer letter is on top, and then there's a property record card, and I accidentally printed out two maps, so we've got two.
Alright, I have too many. Alright, so this is, and, and you'll both be able to look at this, actually, why don't you do this? Both of you? So this is an offer from Brian Lagoon, who is offering a hundred twenty thousand dollars to the town of Canterbury with sale of property with map, map two-two-six, lot two. The tax card values the property at a hundred thirty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars. I would have to get financing for this purchase of approved, so I would like to have some time to get that set up.
What, where are we, where are we? One oh six.
Yes, one oh six.
Oh.
Ken, can you fill in some of the, the blanks?
So, so this is property over, uh, by the racetrack, um, that was given to the town. The people that owned it didn't want it anymore, they didn't wanna pay taxes. They offered it to the racetrack, the racetrack didn't want it. Uh, Beth, I think you might remember, uh, Community Power went over and looked at it for the potential of putting solar panels on it.
Yes.
And because of the terrain, it feels worth doing anything with. Um, I, I, I can't remember if it's commercial, uh, I think it's commercial zone, um, but that's, that's the piece of land it is.
Okay.
Would be on the east side of one oh six.
Yeah.
Right next to where they're building the, um, the new, uh, self-storage, the big self-storage place over there.
And Ken, did, did Brian say how long he thought it might take to put the financing together?
He did not, he did not, he, he said, uh, he's looking for some space, I think for his trucks and everything.
Yeah.
And, um, I think, you know, uh, I mean, he's been in business for a while, I don't know what his financial situation is, but he said he would, you know, if, if the town was open to this, then he would go right away and skip financing for it.
Okay.
Rowan Topos on what areas?
Hmm, yeah, it's a little swampy in places.
So he's, well, I don't know if it matters or not, but he's gonna strip it to put store equipment on? Does lot, does clear it, or don't we know?
I don't know, that, that would be my guess, that he's looking for some place to put his, his trucks and his equipment on.
Okay, so it's right along one oh six in a pretty industrial area anyways, so...
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, um, so what do we need to do to...
So we need to decide if we're gonna accept his offer and what period of time we're gonna meet him.
I make sense with that, yeah, 'cause I was looking at the map and, sorry to say, wasn't listening.
Sorry.
We're gonna put a loan for probably forty-five to sixty days.
That's what I'm calling, yeah, so it could give me...
Nine days?
That seems pretty reasonable to me.
So he's, he's gotta, he's gotta get a loan for the difference?
That is correct.
Oh, okay.
No, not for the difference now, that's our value on the property.
Oh, and he's offering that?
Correct.
Oh, okay, how long have we had it?
Not that long.
I sent on the thing, it was, uh, the tax card, twenty seventeen?
Yeah.
Yeah. And I believe, Ken, correctly if I'm wrong, the owner of the property died.
Three.
And the family that was left did not want the property, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah.
That's correct.
Or nineteen, what's HJRL, what's SMRL, is that? Do we know how to, there's the listing history, but how do we determine?
SMRL, I have no idea.
Ken, SMRL for the listing history?
I'm not sure.
And then twenty thirteen, it went to HJRL and twenty, twenty-three to MI? What's MI? Where does it come in that it's, that the town owns it?
Yeah, the town, like I said, I think, um, the, the people that owned it, uh, the, the person that owned it passed away, the family didn't want it, and, um, we ended up, we ended up taking it, um, or, you know, they, they gave it to us. Um, the Conservation Commission wasn't interested in it, it didn't pose any real value to them, and then, uh, the Community Power looked at it, it didn't pose any value to them, so, um, it's just a piece of property over there that, that we've owned, um, for a few years. Again, we haven't owned it that long.
Right, I, I think I was on the select board, Ken.
Yeah, I, I think you were, so...
So this can't be more than two years ago, probably twenty twenty-three, I'd guess, uh, that it was gifted to the town, so, um...
So an impact, a hundred twenty thousand dollars to the town for a gift is pretty good exchange. Brian's a good local resident, he has a good business.
Yeah.
I don't have a problem with it.
If you can land on tax roll, it's better than no tax, so...
That's, that's pretty much been our policy since we've been in my time, I think it just makes sense.
So do we just, do we vote, or do we...
So, um, I, I think yes, right, Ken, we have to vote?
Yes.
And then, so how about I'll, I'll make a motion that we accept Brian Lagoon's offer for a hundred twenty thousand for, uh, tax map two-two-six, lot two, and that we give him, Ken, do you think ninety days is a reasonable period of time? Or would you rather...
I would think so, I would think so.
For privacy?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I'll, I'll make that motion with a ninety-day window, um, for purchase.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Thank you. And then we have one last piece of public business, right? The committees?
Yes, yeah, that, that would be the last public.
Yeah.
Uh, so, this is a little hard to read, it's the list of all the committees and departments.
Yeah.
And I wrote down what you guys decided on last year?
Yeah.
For who would be what, so if you just fill in...
Perfect, and you've circled, okay.
Do you wanna, do we wanna think, do we have to think about it, or do you...
I, I think you do.
Yeah, I, I'd like to see, could you pick one for planning board?
Actually, that's what I was just gonna say, is I'm gonna do planning board tomorrow night.
Okay.
And, and may take that.
Okay.
Cause I, I am aware of that, yeah.
Okay.
Um, so I'll, I'll put myself in for that. Um, and what I'm gonna ask is, um, I, I think, Ken, the last, when we did this last year, I asked the other select board members to email me directly and no one else.
Yes.
So...
For what you want, for what you want.
Correct, for what you want for committees. So my suggestion is, yeah, take a picture of it? And then just shoot me an email. Hey, um, Ken, is Calvin's email working now for the town?
I mean, yeah.
Calvin's email's working for the town, right?
Yes.
Okay, oh, from the ZBA, actually, yeah, same, yeah. And Ken, a, a question, as long as we're still in public session, is, can Calvin serve on the ZBA as well as the select board?
Yes.
Okay. I can?
Oh, we already took you off the rolls and stuff.
Oh, okay.
We didn't, we didn't think...
Oh, okay.
I thought you could, um...
Oh, well, you, um...
I don't think so.
Yeah, not the ZBA, no.
No, no, no.
Because, uh, um, you guys are appeal to the ZBA, you're in that chain.
Right, the ZBA is a chain, yeah.
A member for the planning board, one member for the planning board can be on both the planning board and the ZBA, but the selectman can't be on the ZBA.
Right, okay, so, and it sounds like you guys have taken care of that already.
Yeah, and, um, it's on the agenda for the next ZBA meeting.
They're gonna need alternates, cause I think me leaves, leaves that a plump.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, it depends on if Brendan O'Donnell's, Brendan's the one where he can be on both.
Yeah.
But does he want, just to be on both?
I think it only be an alternate, that's what we discussed last year.
Well, he is on, he is on, he is the alt, an alternate for ZBA, but full-on planning board.
Right, cause when we, when we talked about it last year, you could alternate for both, but the discussion was, I don't think you can be a seated member and then alternate on the other board.
Oh.
I, I could be wrong, but that was the discussion last year when we were trying to fill that spot on the ZBA.
I mean...
Bodies or bodies.
He, yeah, he probably doesn't have time for it anyway, so...
Okay, yeah, yeah, and that'll be a discussion we could have with, with Ken.
And they said they should wait in a...
Jesse?
Yes.
Scott?
Nice to meet you, Scott.
Nice to meet you, finally, face to face.
Yes, this is my wife Melanie.
How are you? Um, have a seat for right now.
Yep.
We are literally at the end of the meeting. Now, what we're gonna do is adjourn into a non-public session, and we'll talk.
Perfect.
There, a rest right here? Right there, just obviously close the door.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alright, so you guys got this, Calvin, can you hold on to this, or do you want me to...
I'll handle the, uh, the Conservation Commission, so I like it.
I, I'm gonna take a picture.
The only, the only date I can think of is like Solid Waste Committee, maybe like three times.
It's all free.
But all the other ones are pretty much...
Alright, that's back at you, I already did put myself in for planning.
Yeah. And if you have any questions, I should, I'll be listed on website here. Um, did I, you did, is it your session phone? I did.
Yes, oh, you're, okay, no, I think you gave it to me. I'm just gonna find it now in the pile of papers.
Cause I'm gonna have to fill it out.
Yeah, okay, sounds good.
But you can read off.
Yeah, that, that was my plan, and of course, like all good plans.
We didn't really talk about the contract, we just got it.
Nope.
I brought a bunch of extras, but...
Yeah, let's do an extra, that's probably the most expeditious way.
We, we turn our colorblind...
Alright, what do we decide, um, A or C?
We look for my memory? The only ones that's in executive session. There's gonna be topics, one, actually, two of them. Yes, you will. Reputation, and one of them is a personal matter, actually, two of them will be a personal matter.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Okay, alright, so I'm gonna make a motion that we adjourn into executive session per RSA ninety-one A three-two A and RSA ninety-one A three-two C.